You see?
What did you?
I have got it, so it starts to record.
Where did you go?
Joyce Luffis.
I'm here.
So Alex is there? Usually if I'm doing this meeting, I follow the agenda, just easier. So it doesn't always match with the actual packet, but. So first thing, do we have any public comment? Hearing none. Treasury's report. You're still on.
The Pius committee makes a motion that we pay the bills in the amount of seventy, seventy-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
Do we have a second?
Yes, we do.
We have discussion. Any questions, any? Commentary from anyone here or there?
Here or there?
There, there, yeah. All in favor?
Hi. So Evelyn, I have a question.
Yes.
I don't recognize the person sitting at the back table with Keith.
Oh, that is Sam from the reference. I thought you heard, maybe you weren't here, that Sam is here to. If we have any nominations from the floor or any need to change the Google form, Sam can do it live.
Okay.
So you and Zen can vote electronically and vote anonymously.
I may have thought you were saying Zam rather than Sam.
Oh, okay. No, Zam's not doing that, but she's remote too.
We have a Sam.
Yeah, can't be that. Okay. So that's done. Well, since we still don't have Kirsten yet. Sorry, what are we?
And I'll make a motion that the board, building committee members from the consent agenda, we don't have Kirsten, right?
No, we don't have to do that.
Okay.
Um. And if Kirsten has any other remarks he wants to make to his own meeting notes, he can do it later.
Okay.
We can do it in new business, but we do not have to do that. If he's not here, we don't have to. So let's see, there is no upper Hudson report this month. The only upper Hudson news was put in the president's report. Um, we don't have an administrative committee report per se. So we have approval of the minutes. Building committee minutes and the president's report. I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Any discussion, questions?
I do have some questions.
Okay.
Or comments. So has there been any update as far as providing the materials that the board is going to be using? Online?
No, not yet. But hopefully getting any answers soon.
Okay. And I noticed in one of your reports that a library got about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the library construction. Funds. I thought that was hopeful. And something to keep in mind.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm not under, what? Oh, the construction funds money?
Yes. Somebody got about three hundred and fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm. So you looked at all the different, the different disbursements?
I did. I think that you sent it out somewhere in between.
Yes, I did. I sent it to everyone on the board and it's in the Dropbox still. Some people thought it's awfully big, but I wanted everyone to see it at first and then be able to look at it again. So it is there. I think it's under built in the building committee folder. Okay, give me a second to understand what you're getting at. I mean, hopeful that if we end up asking for more money, we can.
For the future. I mean, it's useful to know that they approved that much money.
And it all depends on who puts in a request, how big the requests are. And in what category, if it's going to be a fifty-fifty, twenty-five, seventy-five, or a ninety-ten. So it changes every year. You never know how it's going to work out. So one year it might not happen.
It's basically a million four, and that gets divided up.
Well, as long as.
Based on whoever applies.
But that's based on whether or not the legislature keeps it as flat as it has been keeping it for several years. If they go down, it's not a million four. If they go up, it's not a million four.
That's right.
It all depends.
We'll be lucky to stay flat through the winter here.
Yeah, so you know, every year.
To lobby our assembly. We lobby, yeah.
Oh, yes.
It's a kind of a circus.
Yes.
All the libraries go down and. Although unfortunately, we lobby our representatives and we're preaching to the choir because they're very supportive.
Yeah.
But we do what we can.
And again, I'm explaining this now so I can go to the next thing, only because Kirsten still is not here and I don't think I've heard from him yet, in a refresh. Um. In February usually, not always.
Yeah, that opportunity will come around again.
I know, advocacy day. We all go live, but you know, it's going back to being live. Let's see what he's saying. On my way, he's on his way. Um. And we go around Upper Hudson, set schedules, the path we go on.
Okay.
Um, they try to have people go to certain representatives, so it isn't big. Last year, so few people showed up. We all went to everybody, no matter which library representative it was. They're mostly pro, but not always.
Okay.
And some of these meetings are really interesting. Usually it's the library contingency is one of the largest contingencies of any institution type that the legislature sees come to lobby them. There's usually a big meeting in what they call the well. Um, at noon. And literally, you can see all the way up the massive staircase, you know, bodies of people. Queens usually brings busloads in.
Not surprised.
They're all, uh, so they listen. And this year, we really had high hopes that they were going to go over the flat thirty-four million. The governor always takes it down to like ten and they bring it back to thirty-four. They promised us, truly promised us that it would go over the thirty-four. It did not happen. So very disappointing, but.
For next year's project?
You never know. We keep at it.
Balloters out, um, already those state agencies and it's flat.
Yeah. And when I say flat, the thing is, it's not really flat. Every time it doesn't go up, we're still further and further behind. If prices go up, this goes up.
It's not tracking with inflation.
The gap gets larger every year.
Okay.
So we'll see what happens.
Can we do all the boxes while we're waiting on?
I actually had a question for Phil, talking about, I have a question about the director's report.
You know what? Can we wait until number three, when he does director's report?
Yes.
Okay.
Or it was the, from the minutes from last time, sorry.
Oh, okay. Also, we had a question that we could send again. So what is the question?
Um, so I was just looking over the double hung windows. So the last sentence there says that Dastney will not approve the project as a restoration project. Is that the dormitory authority?
Yes.
Okay. Why do they have oversight over the dispersment of funds for that? I guess I'm.
Because they have lawyers who have a different interpretation of the original legislation.
Dastney, more to your question, Dastney is the executive that the state uses to distribute the funds in that case.
Interesting.
State, the state of New York will use different agencies as your agent to manage funds. As do the feds.
Yes.
No, no, even though you think, oh, that's got nothing to do with me. Well, these are the guys who were picked because it was thought they had the capacity to administer.
Okay. And we found her.
And then he doesn't hear what goes.
Yep. Okay.
So it does make sense.
I have a question. This Oakwood honor that we're receiving, has that happened? The Oakwood Cemetery honoring from the minutes from last, no, the minutes from last month.
You know that, that big plaque with the letter?
Yeah.
They haven't met yet.
It says that there's going to be a meeting. They haven't, okay. I was just curious.
No, and Paul is going to let us know, right, when, so we can be invited to go.
Soon as the minute I.
Says in the bottom tag.
The very minute, really.
The minute.
Very minute. All right.
I have one more question about the windows. Sorry, windows, windows are like a focus.
You're obsessed with windows?
I'm a little obsessed with windows, especially old windows. So why won't they approve it as a restoration project?
What's that?
Why won't they approve it as a restoration project? What about it?
That's an excellent question. You would have to ask the state of New York. Dormitory authority.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, happily asked them. For many years, we, the construction grant program, it's a public library construction grant program. It's administered by the education department, the division for library development. And it is set, there is legislation that establishes the program. So every year we participate in that grand project, you know, process. It's administered locally by Upper Hudson Library System. And we submit a grant, it initially goes to Upper Hudson. And they approve it and send it on to the Division for Library Development.
Okay.
Who then approves it and sends it along to the dormitory authority, because that's who controls all the money in New York State. The dormitory authority has a new interpretation. They have a different interpretation of the original legislation. And it does not recommend that, they don't want to see restoration work at all.
And they don't elaborate on their position.
No painting, no restoration, no, nothing that smacks of maintenance of the building.
Just replacement essentially is what they're willing to fund?
What?
They're only willing to fund replacement.
Yeah, okay. That's what they want to see. Now that has changed only in the last couple of years. Um. Our application has been approved by Upper Hudson. It's going on to DLD, which has probably approved it as well. But it's supposed to have an approval from SHIPPO.
Okay, which we don't have historic preservation.
Right.
Of some capacity because SHIPPO doesn't like the replacement idea.
For him.
This makes sense to you.
And now Alex, the way we're also approaching it is that that side of the building was never looked to be of a reason.
There were a whole block of buildings that used to be there, yes.
Payton Alley, it's not really anything that adds to the historic character of the building.
This is kind of off the agenda.
There's nothing left there to really. So that's the way we're approaching it.
What it makes sense to do.
Stop the air leaks, those are other problems, so it's like.
Any other questions?
I could ask any other questions, but Windows solves.
All right. It's okay, and we're all here.
I can fill you in anytime.
I'm not, I'll talk to you offline, but yeah.
Okay. So.
We can work better.
Zen and Alex, we were going to do the oath of office.
So Evelyn, didn't we establish last year that everybody should be signing the oath of office, not just the new, new folks?
I believe it's anyone who even in, I thought we established last year was that an incumbent coming back in had to sign the oath of office, not everybody.
Yeah. We don't have an incumbent coming back.
Right, but that's what she's. I think that's what we established. We don't, we have new people. It's just for new people.
Okay.
And I'll tell you what. Well, because we have three-year terms, there's no reason why we would have to take another oath of office, or we took the oath of office when we were elected.
What we have to do is to kind of put the interest policy.
Right.
Okay, that may be what I'm thinking of, Keith.
I think that's what you're thinking of.
And we went round and round with that and decided to do it annually.
Okay, so if we connect to this. So yes, Zen, do you have it in front of you?
I do.
Okay, and Alex, it is.
There it is.
You, you get to sign yours, Zen, you get to sign yours when you're back.
I was gonna say, yep, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so here we go. I do solemnly, solemnly swear. And you can repeat these. Please repeat.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the Office of Trustee.
The duties of the Office.
Trustee.
Of the Troy Public Library.
Of the Troy Public Library.
Public Library.
Okay. So if you would, fill it out when you have a chance and we'll make sure it's.
Put your name and then sign the next line.
Before you leave, we'll grab it back.
Somebody else has to sign it.
I know. Well, before he leaves, before we're done, we just keep moving on here.
Very sorry, I can't be there in person for this important moment. I do wish I was there. I am sad, but it was a beautiful moment. Thank you.
See you next time. So, um, the nominating committee report and election of officers. More notes. Here we go. Yes, usually, usually I do write notes myself too. Usually the slated nominee, the nominating committee is presented to the Board in election of officers committees. It's usually quite easy. This year's just a bit different, which is kind of an understatement this year. After the committee met, things changed. But I'll tell you, no one can ever say that board service hearing is ever boring. So if anyone had a chance to look at the forum, the Google forum earlier, things have changed as of today. Someone came forward this morning to add their name to the list of presidential contenders and then someone withdraw their name afterward. Now, per our bylaws, contested elections are voted on by secret ballots. In order to have everyone's responses be anonymous, we are not using our usual paper ballots, but using Google Forms. If you see in the email that Joy sent, it says, remember how she wrote it? Um, yep, officers vote, or if you go into the, if you're in the Dropbox, at the bottom it says officers too. So there's two ways. Stan is here in case anything changes along the way. She can change the form electronically, so it stays as anonymous as can be. None of us board members are editors. Joy and Sam are the editors. They're the only ones who can read the responses. So does this all make sense so far?
Excellent.
Yes.
How do I access this through my desktop here?
You just hit the back key and the back arrow on the PDF there. It'll bring you back to the email and then the link is right there.
This link right here.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you for walking me through that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
So, um, because some of the contested elections and the results may change, other elections and pieces.
Yeah.
We're going to start with the presidential piece. Would you like to say, what we have done over the past is the contenders have said a few or many words.
I have a few. We'll see. So I'm Carolyn Pagan. My background, I have a BA in economics from Trinity College and an MLIS from Syracuse University. I worked at the Troy Public Library for nearly thirty years, starting as a volunteer, then I was hired as a library associate. I got promoted to branch manager and as a branch manager, that's when I got my MLS. And then as I moved towards retirement, started working part-time as the programming coordinator. And in addition to that, along with my daughter Samantha, I owned the kitchen store Culinary Square in Troy from 2015 to 2020. And then for the last two years, I've been a library trustee and a treasurer on the board. While treasury, treasurer, we updated the library staff's salary schedule to be more in line with comparable libraries in the area. We are working, I would like to say worked, to join the New York State retirement system and we invested in treasury bills, affording us the benefit of interest payments. I believe that I am positioned to bring a unique perspective to the position of board president based on those experiences. I have a rare insight and understanding of the issues that we are currently facing. I did only retire maybe three years ago, four years ago, as well as the strengths the library possesses that we can build upon. Owning a business in Troy gives me a different perspective of the needs and wants of city residents as well as community connections I would not have had otherwise. I believe as president, I would bring a fresh outlook to the position. We have two new board members who I know will bring a renewed energy to the board based on their youth and we're very excited about that. I look forward to the opportunity to be a part of that and to work with all the great board members we have and with Paul to put in place plans that will build on the already stellar services we provide to the community.
Thank you. My turn. And as most of you know, I'm Evelyn Greestine. I'm currently president, been on this board for a very long time, I'll admit, resident of the city for even longer. Um, some of you know me and how I approach this job and some of you don't. Well, I don't always subscribe to brevity is the soul of wisdom, or less words say more. I'll try to compress what I want to say today. It's been my belief that the board president needs to be someone committed to the position who continually provides and shares information accurately, who draws out the viewpoint of each of us, who sees the multi-dimensional aspects of the institution, who practice situational analysis and understands the consequences of choices, who actively engages with our community and continually advocates for the library, who supports and respects those individuals from board to staff who are the embodiment of this institution. Throughout my tenure on this board, I have strived to meet those expectations. To do so means being a generalist and a facilitator and sometimes alchemist, being aware of the intricacies of many aspects of board business. It includes awareness of legislative initiatives and mandates and the process to implement them. It's setting our agendas with the director, conducting research, soliciting views and information from all of you and from our many resources and creating and editing supporting documents. Whether as author, editor, or by pushing and nagging, some of the highlights I am most proud of are our first ever public hearing, putting remote board attendance in place, the revised 2011 fiscal finance policy, the revised 2011 long-range plan, the articulated MOU with the Friends of the Public Library, and the two policies that actually deal with intellectual freedom, the materials collection and space usage policies. Yes, I make mistakes and stumble, but in me, you'll get a president with a passion for the library and for the responsibilities of the position. Someone who has never missed any meeting, board or committee, since the beginning of service. Someone with an eye for detail and the big picture, someone who combines the value of institutional memory as well as being able to evolve and see a vision of what this library should and could be. Someone who is aware that there are always new questions and issues that need to be addressed and will do so. So thank you and I hope you'll give me your vote. So if we all click on the presidential PDF. Um. And I should ask, any nominations from the floor? Okay, hearing none. Now we can click. I told you, I stumbled. It's happened. Now we get on this. Huh, interesting. Mine already has one voted in here.
Oh, I think it just comes to that. You can just switch.
That's pretty funny. Sorry. Ah, okay. All right, I'm gonna say update and it's coming back to you. Okay, update. It's been recorded.
Just want to say, you can click, submit another response and vote again. Not doing that.
I'm just, unless, unless. You know, oh my goodness, I hope, I only, I think I only hit submit once.
Well, we're gonna check to make sure there's always seven at the end. We tried, we went through this and unfortunately, if we did do that, we, our emails would have shown up and it would not have been anonymous. Stan figured this would out there.
From the words, is that vote early and vote often?
I'm over here clicking Carolyn Pagan.
Thirty. She's popular.
Popular. Carolyn is very, Carolyn is very, very popular.
This is Troy, New York.
That was my Yorker paper back in seventh grade with ballot box stuffing.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. So have we all had a chance to vote? Marie? Do we have seven?
Yes.
Do we have seven? Thank you.
Vote in zero. Oh, wait, I clicked treasure. My bad. Hold on.
The president one, I'm seeing only five responses. Now six. There's supposed to be seven responses, correct?
Everyone here clicked, responded, submitted.
Click submit.
Yeah.
I see.
Two, seven.
Interesting. We never know how this is going to work.
Did you get to vote, Evelyn? I'm still just showing six. Do you see?
And it says your response has been recorded. Did you, did you get, your response has been recorded?
The response has been recorded, yes.
And yours? And yours?
Right now, it says nothing. I mean, I don't know whether I.
There's, I can show you my picture.
No, never, no, I never got to that part.
Oh, no. Well.
It seems like there's a more, it says update. It looks like there's a more recent draft of your response.
Click and then.
And that's how I'm bringing up the number six.
So then hit.
Or hit, and it's.
Yeah.
It's me.
Okay, we now have seven responses.
I love it.
Um, we have seven responses. Did you need me to say the result now or?
Oh, yes, because it will, it may affect everything else after this. I want to know. I don't.
So. And Sam, you could check on yours. Mine has fifty-seven point one for Evelyn and then forty-two point nine for Carolyn.
Yep.
I never think of it being put in a percentage.
It's interesting to think of the sounds of seven people.
I like the first percentage. Thank you, though. Thank you, everybody, and I will continue to, to make us all proud of ourselves. Um, all right, so now we do have a change. Well, you know, we're going to go to, the treasure is the next one, I think, that is going to be, what's the word for it?
Contested.
Contested, yes. And it is also one of the other positions that has articulated duties. So we're going to switch to treasure. I know Marie is interested.
Zen has a question.
All right. I was just curious, how long are these terms for?
One year.
One year for all? Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, we go through this every October. It's so much fun.
And then Carolyn, are you adding your name to the treasurer list? I just want to make sure.
No, she's saying no. Do we have any nominations from the floor for treasure? Okay, so we have the two. Keith and Marie. Okay, so we have the two. Um, Keith and Marie, you, either of you want to say anything? Marie?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm supposed to go ahead? I'm not. Or is Keith going ahead?
Yeah, please go ahead. And then Keith will go.
I think I'm well-suited to this position. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have an MBA with courses in accounting and finance. More importantly, I am curious about finance, financial topics. I pay attention to economic indicators, debt ceiling decisions, stock market activities and interest rates. I follow local politics and finances. Last year, my estimate of the tax base. Impact on the library tax was closer than our well-respected city controller. He's indicated that I have a better understanding of the calculation of city taxes than many of the city administrators. I've analyzed the financial soundness of hospitals and worked with the federal and state governments on Medicare and Medicaid. I review the library's financial reports very closely and make suggestions for improvements. I have been the lead on over a million dollars in grant applications for Troy Public Library. I'm constantly on the lookout for potential grants. John McDonald says that I always have my hand out for money for the library. Lastly, I have many contacts as a result of my activities that can help. And that can be helpful to the library. And I apologize for not being there today, but I did not want to give you any germs.
You're still here.
Frankie Sluski. I am coming into my third year on this board. I have experience serving on other boards. I had experience in government service as a systems analyst for New York State. And an intelligence analyst in the military. I do have a master's in public administration. I do have the time because recently retired, but still engaged with the labor force anyway. For amusement and money is money. And a lot of this, I believe, is about following process. Asking questions and then following process and documenting it. And I come from a different perspective from hearing some other voices in the city or neighborhoods. You choose me, I will try to do a great job, make sure that everything I do is very clear. And follows the process. Thank you.
I think I guess if there were any other nominations from the floor, I'll ask it again. Nope, okay. So if we all go to our electronic treasures election. We're getting good at this. Okay. So update. Do it again.
That's why I mean actually.
It's showing five so far. Now six. Okay, we have seven.
You have seven?
Yep.
Okay.
These seven point one Marie, forty-two point nine Keith. Is that what you have, Sam?
That is what I have.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm excited.
Now you're left with the awkward thing that nobody's running for vice president.
Well, this is really interesting. So, um, but we have that wonderful thing of. Nominations from the floor. Keith, do you wanna continue as vice president?
I'm willing to continue as vice president.
Does anyone else want vice president? I think of, did, don't hear the other. In that case, we can do a voice vote because it's not a contested election. So, all in favor of Keith Sluski as vice president of the Troy Public Library Board? Sam? I think we have, I do, yes, we do. Okay. And now we have the fun one of secretary. And we have head knowing that was interested in actually running for this one. Actively not interested in fact in running for this one, which is understandable. One of the suggestions that we have had is we find someone who will take on the position of named secretary. Um, because that way, if there are any other contingencies or any other little loopholes someplace. Let's say you have to have a name and Paul has. Said that there is no legal need to have a named secretary, just named treasurer. But in case somewheres you can't serve. In two positions and we rotate the secretarial duties of taking minutes and signing paperwork amongst us. On a monthly basis. At least we have one person that we could say is the secretary of the board. The thought was that we do rotate each one of us taking a month to do minutes and sign things. Paperwork is fairly sporadic, you know, signatures are always sporadically needed, but it's always making sure we're sort of. Covered just in case. Yes.
Uh, what does the secretary sign as opposed to what does the treasurer sign? Or what does the president sign? What are they? What, what would the secretary have to sign?
Usually things like the oath of office. And perhaps the. Anyway, stuff like that, basically.
Yeah, there was one other thing Breon had to come in and sign. And I'm trying to remember, we had to do something. It was paperwork from the state that they wanted. Someone to ascribe something and I can't remember. President usually gets to. Sign things that go to the state, like the documentation for grants, um, other documentation that happens. So, uh, president gets to sign the checks in lieu of one of the other signatories and then we go down the line. It happened. It isn't as often either for the president to be signing things. It's fairly sporadic, but.
Down the lines, that line goes president and then.
For checks?
Uh, yes, you said.
Oh, just for checks. That was the only thing. That any otherwise, it, it's very specific. If an institution wants a particular signature, they say they want the. Either the secretary or the treasurer or the president. It, they don't give us a choice. It's our internal choice of how to sign when someone else is not around.
Right, so you, it, when you said when someone else is not around, you go down the line.
That would go down the line.
That line is, can you describe what the sequence of that line is?
President, vice president, treasurer or president and then I think vice president secretary.
And we've never actually updated signatures at vice president level while the treasurer's. Filed with the bank, the president's filed with the bank. We've never got around to add anybody else in the list.
And the secretary would essentially be like a witness of what has taken place. So if we sign our conflict of interest form, then a secretary would. Probably sign that as well, that kind of thing.
And president, they may make another suggestion in regards to secretary.
Yes.
For all the discussion.
Yeah.
That if we're going to rotate this, I don't know how you guys feel about it. But I'm so used to following one now, um, one of these motions paper. We consider getting another pro book just for whoever's got the secretary role that additional duty that month. They got a second one over if they choose to type in contemporaneously. And we just say this is a secretary's space so they can sit here with two, two items in front, open in front of them.
Yeah, we could get another one.
That would, that would also provide, right now, we don't have a backup Chromebook. And we probably ought to.
Yeah, we could get another one. It's no big deal.
Yeah, that's not an issue. And I think it depends on who's, if we go this way, does anyone have any objections to? Taking on a month? And if you think, you know, if you do, please say so. You know, and then there's always an alternative to coming up with.
I'm not sure what alternative would be.
Someone does an extra month.
Oh, oh, I see, yeah.
Plus the meetings are recorded, so you can go back and check.
That's pretty much what I do and I.
In the past, when there was a situation as there is currently with no one to. Take the, the secretarial position, there were discussions of having Joe, Joy. Um, take the minutes.
Yeah.
So that is an alternative too.
Yeah, you know what I, I said to you and I, I told you I would repeat this tonight. Joy has more than enough to do. She is, I think she's, I won't say she's overwhelmed, but she's got enough. She is responsive to us almost twenty-four seven as it is. I just think that's one more thing, um, and I would not want to put that on her shoulders. That's our responsibility.
And I'll say what I did earlier, which is that I believe it's Paul's decision. Um, as to whether he feels it's feasible or not.
Can I just say real quick, I also have like other, um. On Tuesday nights, I have a school board for my child that I have to go to, so. I, it's not something that I can commit to, just throwing that out there.
Thank you.
Well, and is there someone else? Um, that might be able to do it? I, I don't know. I just think that we need to consider.
We only have a secretary on the staff, um, as a. Joy is our business manager. It's a little different position and I don't have secretarial help.
Is there, does it have to be a board member? Um, if, if I, I was rereading the. Bylaws, by the way, which will be one of the things we get to work on this year. Because it's past its five-year mark, it's expiring, um. Not, not literally, we do things at five-year marks, we're supposed to. Um, it doesn't say it has to be, but the way it's written, it's as if the board votes amongst themselves. And my interpretation is that according to bylaws, it should be a member of the board. And should not be a non-member, should not be a non-member unless the, the bylaws specifically say we could do that. I know there's a lot in the Green Book, in the trustee handbook that talks about the positions and who can be a treasurer, who can be a secretary. But I think with ours, this, oh, please.
Can I nominate myself? Nominate myself in position secretary.
Full secretary or nominal secretary?
Secretary, full secretary.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Slow down, we now need to do the formal vote.
We do, we have to do a little.
We, we haven't moved on yet. We haven't moved on yet. Are you absolutely sure?
Yes.
Okay, because I know you, you articulated your thoughts really clearly and. Oh, you're gonna so love how we write. Oh, it's gonna be fun. Anyway, so, um. The nomination is for Alex Alexander or do you want Alex? Alex Hauntz to be secretary of the board. Um, this also is a non-contested. Vote, so we can do this by. Acclamation, um, voice vote. So all in favor?
I.
I see you have the answer up. All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up.
The service is terrific. No, that's great. I should have explained the word.
Yes, finally, uh, director's request.
Oh, goodness.
I know. It usually doesn't take this long, I swear. I do swear.
Um, I just wanna let everybody know that I'll be on vacation from October fourteenth to around the twenty-ninth.
Doing anywhere fun? Doing anything fun or just taking some time?
I will be traveling to Italy.
Oh, wow.
And leaving this Saturday.
Very nice.
And actually, I get there on Sunday, so it's kind of hard to.
It's okay, I'm on my way back here.
Um, the Fall Fest is coming. Everybody will be here, I'm sure, at the Great Fall Fest. There's gonna be food, a lot of food, a family. Friendly.
Iron Works is coming and they're very, very good.
Yeah, chicken, potatoes, what else?
Chicken.
Also bake sale, also some craft programs and lots of fun. This was actually mentioned, it was funny and, um. Um, McDonald's weekly news update. I was surprised to see it there. Uh, we will be advertising a bit more and expect a pretty good crowd. Construction, which is always a large part of my report. The bids have gone out for the Northwest Parapet. And finally, we got a final report back from, uh. Ambien that there were no issues with, um, asbestos.
Can I, can I ask what the rebuilding entails? Well, it's certainly a matter.
Okay, this, yeah, the parapet is kind of divided into different sections.
Okay.
Section we're concerned with is, ooh, right about there. Is how it goes from the edge over to the, uh, about halfway across. Um, it was. Discovered that it was leaning a bit. Um, so in terms of the parapets, well, there's basically some issues all the way around the building, but. The place to start is this northwest area. Uh, what it involves is, uh, gonna pretty much disassemble it and rebuild it back up. Uh, reusing the same materials. And, um. It's going to be, I mean, they're gonna need scaffolding along the front of the building and. We think they'll probably have to close off the main entrance. So we'll probably have to go around for the side entrance, uh, to have people come in.
Should be possible to set scaffolding to leave the entrances open, I would guess. I, I would, I would push them on that a little bit, I.
Well, um, that was just mentioned a long time ago by, um. Debrino, which gave us the initial estimate. We talked about the whole process.
You say the, the bids have gone out, but it's not been signed off on yet.
No, no, the bids are due back to twenty-sixth.
You may wanna consider. Asking the architects to make it a requirement that existing entrances be maintained. It is definitely possible to maintain those entrances if you think it's important to the operation.
I wonder if it's not a safety issue as well. They're gonna, they should be a part of one. There's a lot of gigantic heavy.
They do it in New York City all the time. Yeah, it, you, you may have, it may be more expensive. I don't wanna say it's the cheapest solution. So if you feel that it's important to have. Any of those entrances, whether it be this one here, or the handicap access ramp. Um.
Well, we'll certainly be discussing it further, I mean, it's going out to, um, these six different companies.
Well, I think you wanna make sure that that's included in the bid price.
Yeah.
So you don't end up paying a change order for it later, so I encourage you to speak with, um. The architects to have me issue an addendum if necessary.
Okay.
Alex and Zan, if, if, pardon, if I meant, it's a lot more than water. The way this place was built. They ran. They were trying edge at the time, marble, and they ran, I believe it was cast iron rod. As that rod deteriorates, basically, if you've ever heard the term rust jacking? The other problem is everything's connected. That work there also is connected with some of our roof issues and ceiling, and that, the roof. The scheduling of the roof also affects the scheduling of the improved HVAC. So there's a lot of pieces to this, there's a lot of history, please ask. They've never simply answered.
I'm just gonna, the one thing I would add to Keith's comment is I believe in addition to the parapet, they're also working on the cornice as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's a piece of cornice up here that was on the very corner. That was cracked, and the crack had been identified ten years ago or more.
Gotcha.
Um, and had been assessed by a structural engineer at the time. And was then reviewed again by a structural engineer in the last three years and found to be worse than it was before. And there were issues that were, so then that piece was actually lowered down to the ground, that piece is now in our backyard, is that correct?
Yes.
And so part of the, it's not just the parapet itself, it's also the cornice and re. Addressing those rusting, uh. Reinforcing members, and then that cracked piece of cornice there, so.
So it's a piece of cornice, just to complete my understanding, is, is the piece of cornice gonna be reinstalled as part of this, um, bid? Or are they, is it?
I don't know if that's gonna be the case. Whether they're gonna reinstall that same.
I, I, I don't know.
I, I don't. I don't think they're gonna do that. A lot of was, or has been, um, that metal was used. In the concrete, in the structure. You know, the metal rust and deteriorates over.
Absorbs a lot of water.
Yep.
So we kind of, you know, want to solve that major issue. Um. Yeah, I, I don't. I don't think, no, I don't think they're actually gonna take the same piece and reinstall it, no.
Will they be infilling that missing?
Yeah.
Space?
Just infilling.
And infilling, do we know what they're gonna fill it with?
No.
That's something you wanna specify? If it's a, I'm just wondering if, like, it has any impact.
I would guess it would be in the documents, but I've not seen it.
Yeah, I just, actually I haven't reviewed all of it, I just got the documents yesterday.
And I believe that.
We're actually over the weekend, I got.
I believe the documents have been reviewed by, uh, state, the, the city historic preservation committee.
Yeah, that, was it gonna get kicked up to the state, or is it just the city that needs to review this?
I believe Shippa would weigh in on it as well.
Okay. Yeah, matter of fact. They want to see the documents.
Shippa.
As we go through the process, yeah. They may specify that in their original approval.
Assume that you're working with TAP to have them do that?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Um.
Anything else?
And we also have a grant that we, we have to replace the PDM roof. Um, you know, but we can't do that, we don't wanna do that until we finish the parapet. Yeah, it's, it's gonna interfere. Not to mention the ASpec system, which also may interfere, but with the roof, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't delay, I would go ahead with the roof work.
Yeah.
Have them do the HVAC system.
Yeah, I think that's what we had, kinda talked about. Um. I wanted to go ahead with, um, color city concrete to, uh, do the courtyard work. Um. And what I'd like to do is, um, have a brushed finish on that concrete rather than the stamping. You know, and talking with, um. With them, it's possible that, uh, see with some of the stamping services, they have to. Use a sealer over the stamping, and that can be slippery. And we don't want slippery.
Yeah.
So I think the brush surfaces will, surface will be good, and, um. You know, their estimate is. Within our budget. Um. The floor in the meeting room has been completed, um. The friends had agreed to, uh, reimburse us for that cost of thirty-eight hundred and forty dollars. Um.
Like.
I think that's it. For construction so far. Oh, the windows, I, I do wanna say. On the window project, we did get approval from, uh, Upper Hudson to submit that to the state, to DLD. And eventually to DASNY. However. It does require a letter from Shippa, which we don't have. Not yet. We have filed additional information with them, and, um, thanks to. Kirsten, who gave me some of the information, which. I was reading what their request was, and I said, what is this, what do they want?
And, and, well, I hope that that was useful information, and hope.
Hopefully.
I think we made some good faith offers to them, so I hope that was consistent with your.
I think we, we did what we could, um, we, we gave them a bazillion photographs and that sort of thing. Um, as I said, so far, I haven't heard back. Now, this can actually go through the process without their letter, but eventually. DLD will wanna see approval.
Sure.
So, we're working on that, still.
Do they specifically have to, um, accept your offer of leaving one window as is?
Say this now, our offer, uh, but.
That was like the stipulation, it was just like, we'll replace all the windows, but we'll keep one of the original.
That's what I had drafted up with that on my draft, uh, so, um.
One of the best conditions, Ed Smith, to come.
Exactly, exactly, uh, or, yes, or historic putting, maybe, I'm not sure what the important part is there for Shippa, but. I thought we at least made a, a fairly generous offer here that, there's a.
Yeah, we're kinda caught between a rock and a hard place on this whole business. Um, it's only been the last couple of years that DASNY has insisted on no. Maintenance type work, no restoration, none of this, uh, they wanna see you build a new building, or they wanna see you add new space. Um, they don't wanna see what they, what has been the case for the last thirty years. Um, so all that changed.
They could not get the whole back wall up and come out ten feet if we had the money, and DASNY would, would be happy with that.
Well, that's the thing, you know, the back wall, well, that was a different grant, uh, two ago, that was a legislative initiative grant, but. Um, all the work here was restoration work, the work on the north wall, which we completed. Um. You know, with a hundred and twenty-five-year-old building. You know, we're talking of a lot of what we need to do is restoration related. So we have, and, you know, we have. Spoken to, you know, legislators and that sort of thing, and I, and so is Upper Hudson, and so is a lot of other people around the state. It's almost impossible to get legislation like that changed.
The interesting thing that we've run into is that the legislation is actually mute on the topic of. Whether it's restoration or reconstruction or what.
Yeah.
And it's how it is then chosen to be administered then by the state agency, there's. The legislation does not go down to that granular level. And so then there's some policies that have been put in place that sometimes are historical, sort of, oh, we've always done it that way. Or no, the new director says we're going to do it that way, and so we have seen cases in the past where we've actually gone. To the legislators and saying, hey, you know what, we're having this problem here, we've been doing it this way for a long time, and now there's a different way of doing it, and why is that? That doesn't make sense, and have the legislators then come back as an advocate then to say, wait a minute. This bureaucracy is not really interpreting our intent correctly, and so we have been able to get some. Movement on occasion, but it does take, um, a, a different approach to it with a different set of. Um. Uh, decision makers, if you can get the legislators to start to advocate for you, that's also helpful. Um. I, I'm hoping that Shippa will. See the sense and the reason of our offer that we've made, and hopefully they'll sign off on it. If not, we may need to try other approaches.
Um, yeah, they did get a little closer the last time, when we submitted all the pictures, and they said. They, it was obvious someone just needed to be replaced. Anyway.
So hopefully, it'll get us the rest of the way there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I put in, um, a correspondence here that we did receive about the children's room, and.
Yes.
I happen to agree with everything here.
Exactly.
I don't know what else we can.
Preach it to the choir on this one, yeah.
He's absolutely correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Anyway.
I, I should say.
You guys know, I don't get the whole toy thing, but I did get. Didn't have a lot of toys as a kid. A cultivator handle was my flintlock, flintlock, if you will, and like. We didn't spend money on lots of toys in our house.
Well, I happen to know Danny, and I happen to know the grandchildren, I happen to know the parents. Um, but, and I happened to see him right after he, he had left the letter with Carol.
And you can tell, as president of the board, I agree.
I, I told him I was all for it.
The board is supportive of his.
But, yes, but, I will say, I also appreciate some of the rationale for why we might not be doing it. Like where, who's gonna stack it? Uh, so, you know, we had an interesting discussion about it, and he, he goes, he had not seen some of the other perspectives of it, but it's still valuable. Um, and I know when his grandchildren go to, like, Bethel, there's plenty, there's a whole big group that is nothing but toys. That's where they're all. No, no, but they're literally a few feet away from sanctuary, and their parents are going back and forth. Because it's not like they're at school or your services, so one of the many parents that are there go back and look and watch. Um, and then they come into the sanctuary a lot, so it's, it's kind of great, but they have plenty of toys, and, and they went on the expedition, which. They saw a lot of places that had a lot of these things that they could play with. So, but I think it's a very valuable commentary from, you know, the public.
Yeah.
And I know a lot of people want, this has been an issue for a very long time.
Yeah.
Um. You know, there have been groups meeting here of all sorts and saying, you know, this would be great if we had this.
Well, if you go back in history, when this building was built. The children weren't to come in here, not in this, but they were at work. Separate children's.
They were at the collar factory.
There was.
The children's library.
Children's library, yes.
Yeah, where was it?
Down the street somewhere, yeah.
Children should be.
Presentation somewhere about, it's not that long, I think the children's library.
Um, are you sending him a response?
I could.
Okay.
I would mention the historic structure report. And that we would like to see an addition. That would accommodate children better.
Well, we haven't gotten that far, Marie, to say that we'd like to see.
Well, I, I thought we, we had accepted the historic structure report.
We, we accepted the report as a report, but doesn't mean we be, we accepted any of the findings of. How we would do that.
I think we could perhaps reply back to say we're exploring how we might be able to do it.
Yeah.
Some of these things here, uh, and that you're supportive of this. And given space and money and, uh.
Possibilities and potential, other possibilities.
And we're, we appreciate the concerns, we support his concerns, uh, and that we, um. Are exploring options of how we might be able to do this, perhaps, given space and money. And money equal also staffing as well.
Anything else, Paul?
Nope, that's it so far. That's all I can think of.
All right. Old and new business, so first things first, I think, um, as a follow-up to all our elections. Committee time. So, we start to think about reorganizing our committees. Um, as noted, there are three standing committees. The finance committee, building committee. And admin. Admin is basically, is. Is the evaluation of the director. Building is all the many, many, many issues that we look at, space, where, how, et cetera. Finance, um, is discussing all the bills and all the. Other pieces materially got in our finance packet, and anything else that comes that is a financial issue. Usually at this meeting, uh, we ask. Members, or what committee they would like to serve on. Um, certainly every single member of the board is always invited to every single committee member, uh, meeting. As are members of the public. Um, unless it's sometimes a personnel issue. And then we have a way of getting, going into executive session by making it a special board meeting, um, in conjunction with that committee. And it's usually admin. Um, I don't know if especially you and Zan have thought about what committees you would like to serve on, and you do need to pick one. It's like, you know, the old Chinese menus, pick one from here. So, um, I'm guessing building.
It would be interesting, continue on the committee if I may.
And, of course, and you still wanna commit, I, I will ask, continuous chair.
I would be happy and honored to continue as chair.
Okay.
If you will have me.
Um, anyone else it, in the building committee?
I'll stand.
You too.
Yep, absolutely.
I will.
Okay. Zan? That's a no, okay. And, and. EKG. I get to go to all the committee members' things anyways, but to be honest, since the beginning, I've always pretended to be committee busy. Not really, um. Then we have finance.
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, Marie, as treasurer, you are chair.
Yes.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, Dan? No. Like this somebody. Two, three, four. Okay, oh, me? Well, I've forgotten, oh, and you don't want to either, that's why. Okay, no problem, I just wanna make sure I'm counting correctly.
I, I was, I didn't notice. I I was, I didn't notice it.
And then we have admin. Um, I don't know if anyone is interested, are you still or do you just?
If someone else wants it, they can have it.
That's what you might say. So at this point, is anyone interested in chairing admin?
Can I ask what that entails?
Um, admin is basically uh, the evaluation of the director.
Yeah.
And it's pulling everybody together. It's we we've been trying to, uh, we've been working on an instrument. So it's looking at the instrument, getting responses back to what people think about it, uh, making sure everyone's had a chance to um actually answer the, you know, use the instrument and then looking at the responses and talking about it and then working with the director on those responses.
Yes.
So yes, to be on the committee?
Yeah, I would like to be on the committee. Is is no one else up for the chair if?
As of the this point, Keith has said that he would continue, but if someone else wants it, it's theirs.
You'd make a good chair and I will help you if you're a chair.
Did you hear what he said?
It's 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 very hard to hear, actually.
Okay, he said you would make a good chair and he would help you if you were chair.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I can do that. I was, I was hoping to to join the committee and and see what, how things run before I committed to something of a higher point. That was my only, my hesitation. So I don't know if Keith, you want to start and then once I'm on the committee and understand more, I can come into the chair position.
You will be helped by a couple, several of us along the way.
Really good at being about in case and he did say that you would be helped along the way. And it's not a committee that meets on that reg- as regular a basis as finance or building. Um, it meets more irregularly and it will also deal with anything that seems very admin like what what there is uh, the need to do a board evaluation, you know, we need to evaluate ourselves. Those again, making, looking at instruments and getting it through, um. And things sometimes come up.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is he okay? You're doing it?
I guess so.
I just want to make sure.
You got this, Sam.
Thank you, Zan. But so Zan's on the committee and
I wasn't even committing.
And you still don't want to, just want to make sure.
Yeah, throw me up. No, thank you.
And I know Keith is saying yes, even though he's looking. Uh, Marie? I think she's saying no, okay. No, Marie, no, she is, no.
No, Kenya.
She's got the K back. All right, so we have our committees. That's one. Um, any other new business or old business or anything else that needs to come up now? That I'm not thinking of.
No, I mean, we're talking committees. We never started an outreach committee, but.
The outreach committee has sort of, it it's that an ad hoc committee. Um, so meetings are very loose. We've been working, those of us who know, you know, you you hear from um, sorry, Lori Dyer has said something out or I'll said something out that says this is what we're doing now. Can anyone do it?
We never really meet. I mean.
We don't really meet. It's it's just been.
Should we meet?
That's right.
Well.
If we have a committee, it seems like we should have a committee and meet.
Sure, it feels like a greater commitment.
Do I hear a chair or vice chair for an outreach committee there?
Well, I've been doing it. Um, it it's not that we're not a community. You realize this is not communication. This is literally being out per se, because I know that was your thought that this is writing things or get, it's being out there in the community. And sometimes it's say, hey, do you want a table here? Do you want to go here? Do you want to do that? Do you want to talk about our election to everybody? You want to go out and put posters up?
So, so again, I I think we had never met, so I I don't know what the agenda is. So I think it'd be good if we had an agenda and if we did meet perhaps. I'm just, or or there's no committee, one or the other. Either we have a committee or we don't have a committee. And if we have a committee, the committee.
The committee comes in uh, handy, I'll put it this way, comes in handy when the staff committee who says here are our rules and you have to have two people and if you don't have two people, you can't do this event and the board committee can say, well, guess what? It's a board thing, so we'll we'll do it and it'll only be one person. Um, do I really think that we always have to meet on something? No, but if this is what.
That's how I feel is that I think the outreach committee meeting needs to be a little bit more focused or organized or have more of a mission than just, okay, here's a somebody contacts us or we contact them, okay, they they need us here, we go. But, you know, I mean, outreach committee really should be in charge of the election, who's gonna do what? You know, how are we gonna get the word out there? How are we gonna, yeah, there's more than just going out to to schools and
And do all.
Special events.
Right. Do you want to establish like a mission statement for it? That's like centered around just like getting getting the word out about the election. So.
Yeah.
Are you interested in our outreach committee?
I would, I would, I would be.
Do you want to take over as chair?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll step back. Help, help as I can. I don't need to be on that committee.
Okay.
Is this a standing committee?
No, it's not. It's still an ad hoc committee. When I change, I don't think we're changing our bywa, our battles. Zan, are you interested in this?
I would join the hour, oh, this is outreach, just clearing. Yep, I can join that.
Marie? Marie? Oh, I think you're saying no, and I I'm getting this. Okay, that was seven. We also have a non-hoc nominating committee.
Pardon me?
We have the ad hoc nominating committee that meets once a year.
Yeah.
All right. Um, any other newer old business? Stan and Marie, any other older new business? Okay. Um, community feedback. This is usually when if you've heard something out in the community um, and want to share it. Good, bad, ugly. We bring it to the table.
Do you want to talk about the one email? I don't know anything about this Shakespeare.
It might get into some personnel issues.
Okay.
Or not, I I will just say this, that it was an operational decision. There was a a decision made by the library. Was a governance issue. Um, about not continuing with it. As far as I know, this, the group was offered certain remedies. Certain options. Um, that they.
It's, it's been going on for many years.
Oh, Jesus, it started.
It was many, many years. And we appreciated it and they did a wonderful thing and that it's time that
Yeah.
We moved on in terms of program.
You look very.
I'm just curious, is it like a funds issue? Is it about a use of space issue? Okay.
It is, it is bottom line, an operational decision that the head of adult programming and the director agreed that um, and all the other parts will fill you in after, if that's okay. Um, but yes, it's I have wanted to go and see the group and talk to them and reiterate some of the those options, but because I had been a member of that group for a very long time, it's not just fixed, I believe. But, um, so thank you for asking that, but.
I I've, I've heard good things about that series. And I think one of the issues that I've heard recently is that it's being discontinued when there's only one more play to go. But no, and the letter says that pretty much everybody in the group is dismayed at the decision. And I hope everybody saw the the email, which went to the boards.
Yes, when he wanted to.
It's like Henry the whatever birth three.
That's where I saw that opera.
Yeah, I think that's. I think it's, I think that's. We did a couple of them twice. We'd have done them. Had it done that, we'd be done.
Wouldn't be an issue. Or we, there have been drop off earlier. I don't know. Um. Okay, so any other?
Is someone going to get back to the writer?
Well, are you going to respond to Mr. Miller?
Yes, I will have to respond.
Yes.
Which is pretty much the same response that we gave to who was probably, never mind.
This is why it's, it's super slow. So, um, any other? Okay, right, comments, public uh, public comments, committee feedback, I should say, sorry, community feedback.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. Any?
I think that was.
There might be something else.
Not that I'm aware of.
Marie, usually had something.
Not that I can think of.
Okay, and today I don't. Well, people just love our programming. I hear that wherever I go, like, oh, my God, it's so it's diverse, it's wonderful, there's so many things to do.
Except there's not enough Shakespeare is what I heard.
Brush up your Shakespeare.
I've got several.
Okay, um, public comments?
I just want to say welcome to the new board members and congratulations to the new officers.
Thank you.
This is Virginia, um, Westcott, our um, head of CIRC. And probably here as long as Paul.
That's not true. I wasn't even here as long as Paul was.
Paul's got ten years on me.
But it just seems like you've been here forever. You don't know everything. Right, any other um, public comments?
Yes, hi. Hi, I'm Lori. I'm the branch manager. I think you all know me. Um, I I also want to say hello and welcome, um, and but I actually have a question. Um, I wanted to know if it would be possible, I am the outreach coordinator uh, as part of my duties as branch manager. Um, and so the out, the newly formed ad hoc outreach committee, I'd like to request to be put in the um the communication pool, I guess, for that.
Um, just so you know, it's not a new committee, it's been around for two years and that's, you know, we, you and I discussed that, so it's not new. We just got a new chair and we're coming up maybe with some new processes.
Great, that sounds fantastic. Thank you.
I would just like, if I may, um, say welcome to the new board members. I know Zan and Alex. I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Carol.
Hi, too. Um, can you hear me?
No, feedback, Frida.
Um, uh, this is Freda Marzon. I'm the president of the Friends of the Troy Public Library and I would like to echo um, the welcome that people have extended to our new board members. One of the functions of the Friends of the Library is doing outreach. And so in the spirit of that, we are having a pop up uh, at the farmer's market. If it's not raining on Saturday, we will be promoting the Autumn Fest which will take place the following week and where we have been asked to take charge of the food. Plus a scary um, book sale. And coming up in November, those of you who have started your holiday lists, coming up in November will be the I Love the Library event in cooperation with Market Block Books. Market Block Books, the library will be sending lists of books that they want for the collection to Market Block Books. They will order them or pull them off the shelves. On that day, um, customers of Market Block Books will have a chance to buy those books and buy books for their own collection. Twenty, the books that they buy for the library go in the library, the books they buy for themselves. Twenty percent of the sale, Market Block donates to the library and the friends pick up and buy the books that are remaining, that are not sold to customers that day. So it's, it's been a wonderful event and I think Carolyn, you started it, right?
I did, yes.
It's been a wonderful event and it's a great chance for the library to increase its book, um, the, its collection. So it's something, uh, we'll be posting a lot of social media about it, but um we ask you all to really talk it up. Um, and uh, ensure that people come on, I wish I knew the date. I think it's in
November nineteenth?
Nineteenth, November nineteenth. It's a Sunday uh, from eleven to three at Market Block Books. Uh, and uh, I hope that the Friends will be on the agenda for the November meeting of the trustees to talk about the annual can, the annual appeal that we did for the library this year.
Freda, do you guys need anybody to bake or anything for the bake sale or are you guys all set?
No, 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 uh, there are, uh, Phil Brizzy and Chloe are collecting the names of bakers. They need more bakers. There'll be a bake sale and then there'll be this, um, the the chick, the barbecue chicken stuff that's going on outside and you can it, you, you're already able to um, put in advanced orders. So what will happen is that we will get uh, the profit over the cost of the of the chicken sale will come to the Friends. Um, so, um, but any questions and uh, we really look forward, um, you know, to working, we've had a wonderful relationship with the board and we hope to continue that. Um, and with our director, sir, and the floor upstairs in the art gallery is done and paid for by the Friends of the Troy Public Library.
And it's gorgeous.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's actually gorgeous. Yeah, our first program in there. And you want November, right?
I can't hear you.
You want November's agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, I want to be on, yeah, if we should have an uh, an item on the, on the November agenda. Please.
And the event will be on the nineteenth of November. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Freda.
Thank you so much.
Bye.
Bye. Any other? Any other um, public comment?
I'm not seeing anymore.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you for staying with us this late, Joy.
Yep, are we all set then? I can stop the recording?
We're just gonna quickly, uh, date and time of next meeting, November fourteenth. Uh, five o'clock for finance, five thirty for regular and um, I'll make the motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, done. Yes, thank you, Joy.
Thank you, Joy.